Call the order, the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Special Meeting for Wednesday, September 22, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Call to order is done. Let's pay our respects to the flag, please.
Pledge of Independence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to remind the board members to pull that mic forward when you have something to say so that it all gets captured, please. Let's noting in the roll.
Wright.
Here.
Ferrari.
Here.
Curtis.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Dunn and Charles are absent.
Get an approval of agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the elimination of items G and H.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, second by Trustee Payne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Item number five, public comments on items not on the agenda. Anyone in the public wish to speak, please come up to the podium. You have three minutes to speak and you have to state your name and address. Anybody wishing to speak? I'm going to ask for the approval to read in a couple of resident letters that were emailed in to us, they couldn't attend. Board find that okay? First letter is from Scott Dalton. Scott Dalton. My name is Scott Dalton and I'm a resident of Oxford Township. I support treatment against the gypsy moth. The past summer, they wreak havoc near East Drainer and Bar Roads, including the Harmony Hills Collection subdivision of Oxford Township. Thank you, Scott Dalton. The second letter is from Justin and Casey Remsing, 1840 Harmony Hills Lane. Supervisor Curtis and Oxford Board of Trustees, we are writing this letter to add our support for the gypsy moth treatment funding in 2022. This year, without warning, the infestation from these insects decimated much of our landscaping and has devastating effects on our homes and concrete structures. According to an arborist who came out twice to spray the caterpillar and assess the damages, several of our smaller landscaping trees and three large pine trees just planted last October have been damaged beyond repair. Our driveway, walkway, and front porch are permanently stained from both the caterpillars and their excrement, which audibly rained down on us for the entire month of June and has proven impossible to clean. And many of our larger native trees were severely impacted as well. We live on a large lot in a heavily wooded neighborhood, Harmony Hills Collection off Drainer Road, so the full scope of our property is impossible for us to treat on our own. We implore you to allocate the necessary funding for preventative treatment throughout the township to ensure this does not occur again in the future, putting so much of Oxford's beautiful natural landscape at significant risk. Thank you, Justin and Casey Remsing. Okay. Yes, sir. Come on up to the mic and speak, please.
Do I have to go up there?
Yes, sir. We have to get you on camera and on recording. It's okay, we don't bite.
Rick in Botham, 2775 Ray Road. And all I wanted to do was ask during this procedure, are we allowed to say anything when you guys are discussing all this stuff? Or do we have to speak now and forever hold our peace?
I would say that you can speak now and if you have questions in the future, what we have done is we have combined the budget workshop and the public hearing, so we will be having a public hearing on the budget where the public does get a chance to speak about items on the budget.
But this won't be tonight?
It will be tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
All right, and that's where I think I might be speaking on behalf of a lot of the people here, but that's what we're interested in, is to make sure that what happened to us last year and probably in the future is going to happen to others because this stuff was spreading as we were going through it. And we want to make sure that we get taken care of. I mean, you know, it was terrible. It was absolutely terrible. We lost months, we lost, like the gentleman that wrote in, we probably lost seven to 10 pine trees and there's some small ones that got chewed out, but there's some taller ones that were probably 12 to 16 feet, they're dead, you know, there's nothing we can do about them. We got an oak tree, and we've got a lot of oak trees, but one in particular that I don't think is going to make it, and it's got to be at least 100 years old, and it's terrible. I walked Delano every morning and it was getting worse along Delano, heading north from Ray Road, and it's, I think that next year they're going to be get hit like we got hit this year, and it's a shame. It's just, you know, this is part of what we have in this community, it's beautiful, and we don't want to lose it. And there's no way people were writing in and saying, oh, just spray them soap and I got woods, you know, there's no way I can spray a 100-year-old tree as tall as they are and effectively cure this problem. We need somebody to help us. And we were left kind of hanging because I know you all looked at it in probably...
January.
Was it January that you went out with Michigan State? Okay, well, even January is too late for us because as a community, we're trying to react now and look into private spraying and getting, we have to get a large area, which we have done, between us and the people in Addison, and you got to work with Addison and you got to work with Oakland County. You guys got to go begging for help for us and to ensure that we have trees in this community, and I think it's important to all of us, so, and I'm sure...
Yes.
Rick in the public, I, we can't correspond back and forth because it's not an agenda item, but during our budget public hearing, there may be a topic where we can discuss these questions and answers, but what I'd like the members of the audience to do is please sign in and get your name and address on there. And again, we're...
And we represent a lot of people, I mean, I, but the problem is, we're right down the line of Addison and Oxford, so it got hit between us and Osner Road and it just carved a path right on through. And those other people that you just read stuff from, I didn't, I wasn't even aware of them, but I'm sure it just continued on north. So, we need to get something done and we cannot wait because we were told by the spray company, you have to sign up as a bunch of individuals at the latest, January. So if you put this off voting on, you know, doing something for us till May, or well, it was what, April that you guys voted on it and voted no, there's nothing we can do, it's too late, you know, we were just left hanging. And you didn't identify these spots to us and show us where the hotspots were, we had no idea. And I know now that you guys were right down the street from us as one of those areas. You need to let people know. If you go out and have state come in here and look at their properties, you need to tell people. Somehow, some way, you've got to communicate to them, whether it be by mail, by the local newspaper, but you need to let them know, it's not fair.
Thanks, Rick. We will address these comments during the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
John Pesta, 1893 Ray Road. Just like to reiterate a lot of what Rick said, we've noticed over the past few years our treetops getting eaten and each year progressively worse. This year, again, just like one of the letters you read, so much excrement on my deck that it filled the gaps between the boards, that when it rained, I had a flood on my deck, which then next to my pool, which is all getting in my pool. Again, this isn't just a few trees, I have woods. I'm right next to, what do they call it now, Rattle Dancer Farms or Rattlewood Farms?
Yes.
And we know that's walking down Ray Road, walking down Delano Road, they're getting hit bad too, and it's working its way. And if it's over on Drainer, it's all going to be here in the middle at some point or another. I don't know, we've talked in the past, I think it was with Mr. Dunn, who's not here, working on the roads, the dust control for the roads, which we had to take care of for the most part on ourselves, collecting up and down the road. We can't do that for this, and in some cases, there's going to be people that aren't going to pay for it. And Rick checked in, you need 40 contiguous acres. Where I am, I don't have 40 contiguous acres, so then what do I do? I have to pay for it, just like I had to pay for people who wouldn't pay for the dust control? I don't think that's fair either. Something really needs to be done, whether it's with the township or in coordination with the county, somewhere along the line. I notice in your annual financial report, there's money in the budget to take care of some things like this, and there's money budgeted for other things that to me would be less important. So, I mean, the trees, you're, we lose trees, I lose my tree line, my property values are going down, you're not going to have extra money to spend, taxes won't be there. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other public comment, we'll move on to item number six, unfinished business. We have none. Item seven, budget public hearing, truth and lending, property tax millage rates proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be the subject of this hearing.
I move to open the truth and budgeting public hearing at 6:42 PM to discuss the property tax millage rates proposed to be levied to support the proposed budgets for the following, 2022 general fund 101 budget, 2022 fire department operations 206 budget, 2022 police contracting 207 budget, 2022 parks and recreation 208 budget.
Second.
Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Payne. I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Okay, the public hearing is to talk about the truth and budgeting, the property tax millage rates that will be levied to support the proposed budget. If any members of the public would like to speak on the budget and the property tax millage, you're more than welcome to come up now during the public hearing.
I move to close the truth and budgeting public hearing at 6:43 PM to discuss the property tax millage rate proposed to be levy to support the proposed budgets for the following, 2022 general fund 101 budget, 2022 fire department operations 206 budget, 2022 police contracting 207 budget, and 2022 parks and recreation 208 budget.
Second.
Okay, moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Payne. John, you're almost quick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing none. Do we get to talk on anything in the public hearing before the budget discussions?
The budgets start here and then once we have issued, once we're done, you ask all the favorite comments.
Okay. All right. Number eight, new business budgets, A, general fund 101, 2022. Anybody have any questions, concerns? I have a comment on this. First off, you have in front of you the proposed budgets. They are done with all of the new BSNA account numbers. You notice a lot of them changed from last year, and they're on a different sheet than you're used to seeing for the past 20 years. This is the budget report Brockford Township as BSNA presents it. It is new, it is different. We moved your cheese, Curtis Wright, and Trustee Payne have both recognized that there are no subtotals for departments, and hopefully we'll get through this and on a learning curve, we can make it better for us next year with minimal work. I want to address one thing in the general fund that most of the members in the audience are here for, and what the township is doing in preparedness for 2022. Last year, it was noted that we voted no on spending any money. We didn't have monies budgeted for it. We did start working on the gypsy moths early last year, but not early enough to get the budget amended, not early enough to get the monies moved, not early enough for a lot of things, our fault. We were early enough to identify it, but maybe did a poor job in communication. I talked to a lot of you on the phone, I talked to a lot of you in person, and believe me, my yard is devastated with gypsy moth and our community is. The reason that we started the infestation survey was because my neighbor asked me if we ever had gypsy moths before, so we started the survey and identified it. We know the timeline, what's got to be done. In anticipation of this, this year, we allocated $150,000 for gypsy moth eradication, and I'm trying to find that line I downloaded.
Page eight?
Page eight, yeah, I was just flipping through it here, it is all different.
We're towards the way down.
The reason, the reason that we allocated $150,000 for gypsy moth spraying is we haven't been sitting on our laurels. CJ, our grants manager, myself, have contacted Senator Baird, we've contacted Dave Coulter's office, working through Carolyn Kraus, we've contacted Mike Spiz, we've contacted Alicia Slotkin, we've contacted Debbie Stavodan. We've gone through every legislative body in the state, local and federal governments to find out what we can get done for gypsy moth eradication. CJ is writing grants we're chasing down, Mike Spiz has informally told us that we have to be prepared with money in our budget and show at the September 30 budget input that we have monies allocated for it. What's going to happen is unauthorized right now, but they are preparing to put money in the budget at Oakland County for spraying of gypsy moth. And if the township is going to work with them and be in that program, we have to have the money in the budget. So I went ahead and put that money in the budget. Now, that doesn't mean we're going to spend all that money. Depends on how much money we get from the state, depends on how much money we get from the local, the county, I don't know what all their ARPA money is being allocated for, if they can even move it into this, but we have many, many people making promises to spend money. Our money is there as a contributory or a match fund possibly, should we see that money. And again, that number is $150,000. The last time the township was sprayed was 2006? Yes, 2006. The difference in cost from 2006 to 2021, in 2006 was $15,600. In 2021, the estimated cost was about $145,000, just to spray four areas of the township. The monies, it's gone up dramatically every year, but in consideration, I put this money in the budget, so we'll see what the rest of the board says about this budget. Hope that helped answer your questions.
Good.
So...
No, no, no.
Can you slide on?
I'm sorry, John Pesta again.
Yes, John.
You say four areas of the township, I mean, what are we looking at?
I said four areas of the township that we surveyed last year.
Okay.
And you were in that area, I was in that area. There was an area, I don't have the four areas, but you're in the area, Rattlewood's in the area, Ray, Delano, Bar Road, Harmony Hills, Oakland County's got, Oakland Township has them, and Orient Township has them, all along that north-south corridor through there.
All right, and now this $150,000, is that a contributory resident too, that like we've done in the past with the dust control? Or is it strictly, strictly the township paying for it?
This is money that I have allocated for consideration when we get the monies from, determine the amount from the county, state, and feds to see where we're going to spend, how much we're going to spend.
And 150 is going to be enough?
No one knows until they do the survey in Addison Township, which they've already ordered, the survey to be taken in Addison Township and in Oakland Township. So there are other townships that border us, when the cost comes in, it's all buried on the number of acres sprayed, how much time you had it. We got to deal on it because we were going to go in with Ray Township and we missed the vote, we had no monies budgeted for it. So when it, when we do our survey, when we get our results back, there will be a cost from the aerial sprayer for the amount. When we get funds from the county, we won't spend all this 150, if they give us 150 and the cost is 150.
Are you willing to spend more over budget if it comes to that?
We'll see.
Okay.
If you're asking me my opinion, yes, you have five other, six other board members that will have to answer.
Looking at your financial statement, you've got 2.2 million excess at your discretion to use, and I think this is important.
We understand that, I understand that, and thank you for coming tonight so that everybody else on the board understands how big of a problem this is.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Any other questions from the board on general fund? Oh, yes, Rick.
Sorry, I don't know what to say. Just, just a quick question, because I found out I'm on straight road and I crossed into Addison, did a lot of work, and there's a lot of people there that need it too, so you guys are trying to work together with them to make sure they're covered as well.
Addison wouldn't even be doing the survey if it wasn't for a couple of guys sitting up here right now.
What's that?
Addison wouldn't even be doing their survey if it wasn't for us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
And we need to know early because we have plans to spray, whether you guys do it or not.
We understand that.
And so we don't, we can't wait till past January, when you, if you make a decision that way, that hurts us, we can't get it coming again.
We understand that.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Okay, down the line. Yes, Susan.
I just wanted to say, if there's ever something that you would like to see laid out differently, either Mano or I could easily have checked a box and run this with department totals.
Okay.
It would have taken 30 seconds.
Like I mentioned, I took Trustee Payne's and Clerk Wright's comments to heart, and my first stab at this, doing it in BSNA, with your help and Mano's help, it's what we have today, and it can only get better. Okay, general fund. Yes, Clerk Wright.
A couple of comments on the general fund. Number, number one, in the revenues, this is nitpicking, but I have to nitpick it, bumping the reimbursement from Poly and Trail from $1,000 up to about $100, I would implore this board to leave it at $1,000 because as you see down in our budget, we're going on a $60,000 budget to maintain 16.9 miles of trail, and I believe that money was very well spent if you look at the condition of the trail if you've been on it. So I would ask the board to consider that. Also, on the contributions from the township to the Poly and Trail, that number's a little bit low, that can be amended in future date.
Which line item was that?
It's in the expense, just bear with me because...
Second to last page, page 10.
Page 10.
Bottom, second item, it says 13,000.
Yeah, our contribution's $14,055 per calculation formula. My other concern is that we pulled out the General Appropriations Act and the wage resolution, those are a very big component of this budget that have not been approved, and I feel like that those need to be considered to plug those numbers in what they're recommended for approval before this general fund budget is approved. So those are my concerns of moving forward with the general fund.
Okay, Treasurer Ferrari.
I agree, Chris, with what you're saying on that, but I always like to get something on the books, you know, that's why I always have, at least have something for the budget. 101, 000, 400 opening fund balance, I'd like to increase that to 200,000 and also increase the maintenance and safety path, because we're not going to get to those this year, whereas 2021 amended at 200, move that 200 to 2022. It's not that we're able to get all this stuff done.
Okay. Are you capturing, this is all being taped, right?
And I'll, I'll make this part of a motion to, I have a motion to approve the budget.
And you'll capture the $100 out of, out of Poly and Trail?
That, that's a little thing we can do that as we do budget amendments.
Well, if we're going to do one now, let's do this one now too, then.
So you need to know then what you're changing, what your revenues and expenditures are going to be balancing at if you're changing numbers.
Yeah, that's why I had mine calc at the 200,000. The other ones, I understand they're important, but I think we do those during the mid-year budget cleanup.
What are you adding the 200,000 for?
Maintenance and safety path, because we have 200,000 for 2021. We're not going to get to that, we have to put over to 2022. You know, my, we're working on, we're not going to get done this year. I wish we could, but this isn't going to work.
What's the expense code on that one, Joe?
101, 231, 933 dot 297, page 5, four or five down. So that goes to 201, and then add 200,000 in opening fund balance.
Okay. That's the only, those are the only two you changed, right?
Yeah, because those are big ones. That's, that's pretty large.
So what's your, what's your total end up at? Thank you.
And also to, I know Stony Lake is open to the public, so you pay that $12,100 in lieu of taxes. Would the board consider, again, making that private? For just township residents?
We have a question in the audience. Slide up, Ron.
Mr. Brederman.
Hey.
Ron Davis, Parks and Recreation Director by law, I don't think you can do that.
I think you have to pay the taxes.
I answer to an elected body, a legislator body, so I don't think it can come from this board, I think it comes from the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Let's start with you guys first.
But I tell you, as Parks and Recreation Director, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. We don't have the staff, and it's not fair to the residents not to really use a park to be owned.
No, our residents will be fine.
No, residents won't be fine, Joe, because you got to have a gate guard there to monitor who's coming in and out of the park. That park has gotten more use by Oprah in it, which justifies us putting more money back into it. We just spent $45,000 from New Doc, so as your Parks and Recreation Director, I'd be totally against making that park residential only again.
Okay, well, that's a discussion for another venue, then.
I move to approve the recommended 2022 general fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $2,796.717, based on property tax millage rate to be levy at 0.8944 mils, attached the amended spreadsheet as amendments.
Second.
Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, Noel.
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Okay, item double I, road fund 204, 2022 budget.
I move to approve the recommended 2022 road fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $273,996, attached the spreadsheet as amendments.
Second.
Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
And Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Question carries. All right, we'll get down to the fire. Fire Department Operations 206, 2022 budget.
Any questions?
Do we have questions?
Lindsay, how come we're capping into so much from opening fund balance for 2022?
Um, we have...
Slide up, Lindsay, speak into the mic, please.
She'll probably have some major expenditures or something.
Um, I think mostly because of the, maybe to do with the grant revenue and then we had, that we haven't received this year.
Seeing none, roll call please. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Court Wright, no. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, item double I, road fund 204, 2022 budget.
I move to approve the recommended 2022 road fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $273,996. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Court Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Get down to the fighter. Fire Department Operations 206, 2022 budget.
Any questions?
Do we have questions?
Yeah. Lindsay, how come we're capping into so much from opening fund balance for 2022?
Come on up, Lindsay. Speak in the mic, please.
She'll probably have some major expenditures or something.
Um, I think mostly because of the, maybe to do with the grant revenue, and then we had, that we haven't received this year, or that we can't count on receiving next year. And then the other portion is we have hired quite a few people, so a lot of that is in wages.
Also, we have a $625,000 vehicle purchase that we're making.
Yeah.
Where does that bump your fund equity down to, do you know?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
I can look into it and get back to you.
How much, Curtis?
I think they're, I think they're, auto's like 1.723 million.
So it brings them down about 900?
900,000.
I move to approve the recommended 2022 fire department fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $5,741.323, based on the property tax military to be levy at 4.4500 mils. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Court Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item four, police contracting fund, 207, 2022 budget. Are there any questions concerned on the police funding budget?
I move to approve the recommended 2022 police contracting fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $3,405,900, based on the property tax military to be levy at 3.8461 mils. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second. I'm gonna give that one to Trustee Noel.
Okay.
All right. Moved, moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Court Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item five, Parks and Recreation 2A, 208, 208, 2022 budget. Are there any questions or concerns?
I move to approve the 2020, excuse me, approve the recommended 2022 Parks and Recreation Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $1,463,000, based on the property tax military to be levy at 0.9809 mils. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Court Wright?
Yes.
Okay, item six, Cemetery Maintenance Fund, 209, 2022 budget. Are there any questions?
I move to approve the recommended 2022 Cemetery Maintenance Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $85,000. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Court Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item seven, Telecommunications Fund, 239, 2022 budget.
I move to approve the recommended 2022 Telecommunications Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $42,684. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Court Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Building Department Fund, item number eight, account number 249, 2022 budget.
I'm, Jake, I looked in there, do you have the wage for the new building official?
Uh, no, we do not.
Should we put in, or just do a budget amendment when?
We'll do a budget amendment at the time I hear.
I move to approve the recommended 2022 Building Department Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $282,700. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Court Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
All right. Safety Path Fund, 297, 2022 budget.
I move to approve the recommended 2022 Safety Path Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $356,657. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Court Wright?
Yes.
And Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Municipal Building Fund.
I move to approve the recommended 2022 Building and Site Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at zero. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes, and approve closing this Building and Site Fund with any future revenues and expenditures be allocated to the general fund.
Second.
Excuse me, Pastor Chair. It's no longer called the Building and Site Fund, it's the Municipal Building Fund, just for clarification.
Okay, yes, just put that in there if you could as the right nomenclature.
We have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Court Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Okay, new business, item B, Oxford Public Library, 2022 budget. In your package, the budget's sent through by the library?
I move to approve the recommended 2022 Oxford Public Library budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $1,332,001, based on the property tax military to be levy at 0.6343 mils, and 0.6768 mils, equal to 1.3111 mils. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. And before we go on to questions, speak in your mics, please. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Court Wright?
Yes.
Item C, North Oakland Transportation Authority, 2022 budget.
I move to approve the recommended 2022 North Oakland Transportation Authority budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $1,562,925, as far as the property tax military to be levy at 0.2341 mils. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call please. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Court Wright?
Yes.
And Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Okay. That was nota. All right, to Polly, Polly and Trailway Management Council, 2022 budget.
I move to approve the recommended 2022 Polly and Trailway Management Council Fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $60,800. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second with a question. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Does this include the changes that Mr. Wright wanted, or are we gonna wait on that?
That, that indirectly does not include the change. When it was budgeted for Polly and Trail was $1,000 plus the fee for being in the Oakland County pool for investments. So we'll just, we'll just still hold it accordingly.
Okay. Okay, no further questions, roll call please. Court Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item E, set the 2022 Parks and Recreation debt mileage rate. Treasurer Ferrari?
I move to set the Parks and Recreation 2021 debt mileage rate at 0.2300 of a mil, unauthorized due place of the December 2021 tax law.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Court Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Okay, item F, setting the 2022 mileage rates for L4029.
I move the following moves raised to be levied and collected, December 1, 2021. The general property tax rule on all real and personal property within the township upon the current tax rule and allocated mileage of 0.8944 of a mil for township operations, the vote authorized mileage of 0.9809 of a mil for Parks and Recreation, 3.8461 mils for police contracting on incorporated portion of the township only, 4.4500 mils for fire operations EMS and advanced life support, 0.6343 of a mil, and 0.6768 of a mil for Oxford Public Library, 0.2341 of a mil for North Oakland Transportation Authority, and 0.2300 of a mil for Parks and Recreation bond debt.
Second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Payne. Any questions?